Next, we have the annual financial audit report. Dr. Swift?
Yes, I am so pleased, trustees, to share this evening the annual audit report at this November 10th board meeting. The annual audit effort was completed by Plant Moran and by our audit professionals, who are going to come to the podium now. Our partner Jennifer Chambers and senior manager Anthony Sazanowski, as well, of course, Ms. Jill Minnick and the finance team did a great deal of work in preparing for this audit process. Trustees, I'll make this introduction brief, but I do want to acknowledge and appreciate publicly the work of the finance committee over this past year. That committee, those members who are sitting here at this table, soldiered on through a pandemic, often meeting more than once a month, and then also bringing those items to the full board. And you all have reviewed in detail the progress on our Ann Arbor Public Schools budget, month by month, through this fiscal year. The report this evening ends through June 30th of 2021. So that's the evaluation we'll be receiving. I have appreciated throughout this time your careful consideration in members of our finance committee and members of the board really being very thoughtful, pursuing every question, every avenue, in ensuring our responsible stewardship and oversight of the resources that we've been entrusted with to serve our students. I want to thank behind the scenes, Ms. Minnick and the members of our finance team. People didn't say much about it, but through the darkest days of the pandemic, that team continued to report in person every day and on many days in order to get payroll out, to take care and make sure our bills were paid, our budget was balanced. And I just want to give a shout out, Ms. Minnick, to you and to your extraordinary team who've carried out these responsibilities. And during the course of these 22 months of the pandemic, the responsibilities have become a great deal more complicated, and you've managed those beautifully. The environment continues to constantly change. And I noticed in the introduction, trustees, to the audit, you've read it. The auditors note the historic nature of this year. We say we'll never have another one like it. And yet, we don't know what's coming next at this point. Trustees, the opinion that you will receive from our Plant Moran Audit Team this evening is the highest opinion that a public school district can be awarded. I'm proud of that, and I'm grateful for that. And it doesn't happen by accident. It's a result of hard work of this board and of this team and also of our entire community. We always want to express our gratitude to the Ann Arbor Public Schools community for all their ongoing support through millages and through many endeavors that we take to serve our students well in these Ann Arbor Public Schools through the fiscal resources with which we've been entrusted. And so at this time, partner Jennifer Chambers will begin. And then when the presentation is concluded, trustees, as we would normally do each fall, Ms. Minnick will join the team, and they'll be pleased to receive your questions. Ms. Chambers?
Okay. Thank you for having us here tonight to present the results of the annual audit, as Dr. Swift mentioned, for the year ended June 30, 2021. We will focus on the graph presentation here, but I did want to take a moment to mention the other deliverables that you would have received in connection with us completing the audit. The first deliverable is labeled "financial report", and that is the financial statements for the district. The second is the "federal programs report", and this is an audit specific to the federal grants that the district receives. This audit is a compliance-based audit, and again, is specific to those federal monies. The third item that you would have received is labeled "the report to the Board of Education". This is a communication required by us as auditors to you to just report on specific areas' results from the audit. And included in that, that report is also an informational section, which is meant to just provide resources, additional information to the Board of Education with regards to primarily what's going on at the state in terms of state funding and commentary on the federal grant funding. So that's just provided in addition to the financial statements themselves as reference and information to you. I do want to echo Dr. Swift's comments to thank Ms. Minnick and her team for facilitating the audit. It is quite an undertaking to go through it. And in addition to their normal daily jobs, they have to manage us, the audit team, and all of our requests. So we appreciate their responsiveness and being able to accomplish this. Looking here at the first slide, I do want to just provide a quick summary of the audit results. So just a reminder that all school districts in the state of Michigan are required to have an annual audit. As a result of our audit on the financial statements, we have rendered an unmodified or clean opinion. As Dr. Swift mentioned, this is the highest form of assurance that we can provide as auditors, that the financial statements are materially correct. In addition, that federal programs audit that I mentioned, here is where we select on a rotating basis grants to test for compliance. This year, we selected two grants for testing: the Coronavirus Relief Fund, or referred to as CRF, and the Education Stabilization Fund, or ESER. Sorry, we tested three programs, the third being the Special Education Cluster. In total, the district received this year approximately $22.3 million in federal awards. And of this, it's important to note that about 46% of that does relate to those emergency-funded grants, of which CRF and ESF, or ESER, are the two primary grants. And as I mentioned, we tested those. So we just wanted to mention that as impactful to the federal programs. Before we go into the specifics of the financial results and provide you an overview, we did want to just cover some highlights and challenges that I think summarize this year from a numbers perspective. Obviously, there's a lot you can cover elsewhere. But from a highlights perspective, we did want to mention approximately $20.3 million in current-year capital investments related to your outstanding bond issues, of which $16.7 million came from the 2019 bond program. So seeing this as the first year that that's really getting up and going, a significant investment here in the district's infrastructure and capital items. Additionally, the sinking fund millage continues to be a critical element to the overall capital repair needs of the district, this year with about $19.6 million in current-year investments from the sinking fund. And finally, from a funding perspective, I mentioned the significance of the emergency COVID-19 response federal grant funding. This year, the district had about $10.56 million in funding. And as you are aware, there will be additional funding over the next two to three years with regards to this. And we have some additional commentary on the COVID-19 grants as we talk through the presentation. So looking on the other side with regards to challenges, it is no secret that the impact of the pandemic on every aspect of what you're managing and what the community is experiencing from the pandemic is real. We note that from the remote learning challenges to additional costs that the district incurs to equip buildings for the safe return to in-person learning. You are also working to balance the investments in staff and services with overall fiscal responsibility and working within the current funding structure. And as we'll talk about, is highly reliant on the state of Michigan funding. You're also dealing with the challenge of influx of short-term grant funding that is not part of the permanent funding structure. So while it is significantly beneficial to school districts to be receiving this grant funding, it's not there for the long haul. And so it really is going to take deliberate planning and assessment of how to utilize these resources, recognizing that it is really ultimately one-time funding. So now we can move on to looking at some of the financial results. The graph presentation largely focuses on the general fund, which is the primary operating fund for the district. The first numerical slide that we have shows the general fund revenue and expenditures, shows the original approved budget from June of 2020, the amended budget from June of 2021, and then the actual audited results as of June 30th, 2021. It should be noted that in all of the numbers presented here, we have a shaded section that represents additional funding provided by the state of Michigan for the retirement system specifically. This is amounts that is received by the district, but then also required to be paid right back to the state of Michigan retirement system. And so we highlight that in each of the bars that are represented. And in the current year, that's the $18.5 million. We refer to this as Section 147(c) funds. We'll continue to use that term a few more times throughout the presentation. So looking at the left-hand side of the graph, this is the general fund revenue. The district originally budgeted about $248.7 million of revenue. And then the final amended budget was about $273.2 million. Actual revenue came in just slightly higher than that, at about $275 million. As noted on the bar chart, the actual revenue excluding that $18.5 million pass-through or 147(c) funding would be $256.5 million. The reason that we call this out is because this is a categorical provided by the state. And in the absence of that funding, the district would still be required to make those payments to the state of Michigan. So it's just important to know what would your revenue be in the absence of that additional funds? So if we look now to the right-hand side of the graph, this is looking at the general fund expenditures. The original budget was $256.2 million, with the amended budget being increased to about $272.5 million. And actual results was just very close to that, just slightly lower than what was planned. Later in the presentation, we're going to take a deeper dive into revenues and expenditures. This just provides you a high-level overview of the results of the year. Moving on, the next graph continues to focus on the general fund budget versus actual results and looks at the impact unexpected versus actual fund balance. So I'll kind of walk you through how to navigate this graph here. So on the left-hand side, we start with fund balance as of June 30th, 2020, and present the revenue, expenditures, and other items that impact ultimately the change in fund balance, coming down to what the district's fund balance is as of June 30th, 2021. And then as you work your way across, we present the amended budget alongside of the actual results. So you have an idea of where was the revenue expenditures and ultimately the fund balance compared to budget. It's important to note in the variance column, and particularly in the percentage variance column, that the percent variance from the amended budget to actual is extremely close. So revenue varied from what you expected by 0.64%, expenditures by 0.02%. Said a different way, if your budget was only $100, revenue was off by 64 cents and expenditures off by 2 cents. That is impressively close. We also have a few additional metrics that are presented at the bottom of the slide. We note that the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures was 8.2%. And we'll dive a little bit deeper into what this metric means and how it's fluctuated over time in a couple of minutes here. We've also noted the fund balance as a percentage of revenue, and that's 8.1%. As you are aware, the state has implemented what is referred to as early warning legislation, where districts that have a fund balance of less than 5% of revenue would be required to submit additional reporting and other monitoring documentation to the state. We do commend the district for the improvement in this metric over the past several years, but again, caution you to continue to monitor that threshold closely. Additionally, you will see we have equated your fund balance to the days of operation. So that's the very last item on the chart. This is also another helpful metric, just while you're keeping in perspective what does fund balance mean and what can it get us? And so while $22.2 million, which is the ending fund balance as of June 30th, 2021, seems like a large dollar amount, when you put it in perspective to what that could do from a days of operation, that would equate to about 30 days of operation. So again, just providing that perspective of what fund balance is. So moving on, we thought we would take a look at general fund fund balance, but looking at it historically, again, just to help provide that perspective of where has fund balance navigated over the past several years since 2012, is what we're presenting here. From 2016 to 2019, you'll see that there was a utilization of fund balance, but since 2019, the fund balance has increased. And while it is much stronger than in 2013 and 14, it is important to continue to monitor this as you look into the future, particularly as, you know, again, when you're looking at absolute dollar values, while the numbers are higher than they were back then, the cost structure of the district is also different. And that's why we provide that metric of percentage of expenditures at the bottom, again, to kind of give you that benchmark of fund balance in comparison to the district's overall expenditures. And for that measure, you'll see that while there has been some fluctuations in that over time, really since 2017, that measure has remained pretty consistent to where it lands now at June 30th, at 8.2%. It's probably worth noting here, although we could talk about it in any of the slides related to fund balance, that just fund balance in general, just thinking about the importance and meaning of it to a district, there are periods of time during the year where the district does not receive funding, particularly state aid, where there's a time gap just in how it's structured, where you don't receive those payments. So really, having fund balance helps you from a cash flow monitoring perspective and also helps keep consistency and overall fiscal health as you're dealing with uncertainties in the environment, of which you're experiencing one very significantly right now. And so that just helps kind of emphasize why does fund balance matter? So here, now we've got some fund balance indicators that we wanted to walk you through, again, just kind of helping provide some benchmarks with regards to fund balance. So this graph utilizes the 2021 revenues and expenditures of the district to point out what fund balance levels would be needed at certain indicators or threshold points. So the first one that's presented here is with regards to that estimated early warning level, which I described a few slides back. So the district's fund balance would be $13.7 million if it was at that 5% of 2021 revenue. So that's kind of the first threshold that we present. Moving up the graph, the second threshold is what Ann Arbor Public Schools' actual fund balance was as of June 30th, 2021, at $22 million, or as I mentioned, 8.2% of your expenditures. The next threshold that we present is a 15% fund balance target. That would equate to about $40.8 million of fund balance. This particular threshold is often referred to and practiced many times by the Michigan School Business officials, for example, as potentially a recommended fund balance level, again, largely associated with kind of bridging some of those cash flow gaps and making sure that you can sustain during that period without having to borrow. And then the final indicator that we have here on the graph is the 2019-20 statewide average level, which was 15.9%. So if your fund balance were to be at the statewide average, you would have a fund balance of $43.3 million. The next graph shows the operating results, so taking revenues, less expenditures, for the past seven years. So this would be in any individual year, what was the net change in the general fund fund balance? In four of the seven previous years presented, there has been significant one-time funding sources or uses that played a significant role in the impacts on fund balance, and those are noted in the footnotes, just really for historical reference purposes. For that timeframe, in the absence of these one-time events, the result to your fund balance really would have been more of a break-even position. So in the absence of that, that's where the level would have remained. So now we're going to switch and dive into a little bit more specifics with regards to the general fund. I will cover the general fund revenue, and then I'll turn it over to Anthony, and he will cover the general fund expenditures for us. The first graph here for general fund revenue depicts general fund revenue, other financing sources that totaled about $275 million. The greatest source of revenue for the general fund is from the foundation allowance at 63%. And the foundation allowance is really made up of two components: the enrollment of the district as well as the state allocation on a per-pupil basis. And in perspective, this amount was about 65% last year. And really, we'll see the some slight shifts in the pie that's largely driven by that change in the grant funding that I mentioned. And that's really just driving a slight variation as compared to the prior year. Working counterclockwise, the next component is 18%. And that is related to, we're calling it kind of grant funding in total, state grant funding, federal grants, and special education state funding. 7% of the district's revenue is related to that Section 147(c) pass-through monies at $18.4 million. And then the final component at about 12% is the county special education millage. So that's a pretty impactful measure as well from a revenue source for the district. So as I mentioned on the previous slide, the largest component of your revenue source is that foundation allowance. So we've got a couple slides that helps break that down from a historical perspective, looking at those two different components. The first one being the per-pupil allocation from the state. I wanted to mention that the table at the bottom, just to kind of help you gauge what it is that you're looking at. So we've got the historical trend, but then the table provides you insight into some specific years, largely about a decade ago, where districts went through a series of cuts in that state funding on a per-pupil basis. And most recently, in 2019-20, districts had to absorb a $175 per pupil cut. So we just provide that there, just so that you can see what was really driving some of the impacts on foundation allowance. In 2008 and 2009, you were at your highest funding level, presented on the graph here, of about $9,700 per pupil, which included Section 20J funds. That's the orange bar presented. At that time, these amounts were removed from legislative action along with those series of cuts that happened over the next several years, if you're working your way from left to right. By the time you get to 2012, all school districts in the state of Michigan had been reduced by about $470 per pupil. Added that, the removal of that 20J funding, this was a highly impactful shift to the overall funding picture. In this time horizon of those cuts, it ultimately related to about $703 per pupil less that the district received. Since that time, you've been receiving nominal increases in that per-pupil funding. Again, 1920, the beginning of the pandemic, had a little bit of a hiccup there. But I think what's really profound about this graph is that when we look to what we expect you'll be receiving actually in '21, '22, it's $9,701 per pupil, just shy of where it was in 2008. And we know it's a much different environment right now. And so the fact that you are just now getting back to where you were in 2008, I think, is very telling. So now we'll take a look at the other component of that foundation allowance revenue, which is student enrollment. And so here, we've presented kind of that from 2012, 2013, what the district's fall FTE counts were in each of those years. And so over this time horizon, while there was some increases for the majority of those years, it's been relatively incremental over that time. But then since 2018, 19, the enrollment has declined slightly. I do want to mention that the 2020-2021 bar, we're showing you two components here. So in '21, there was an interesting funding mechanism put into place by the state. They referred to it as the super blend. And so as I mentioned, you are funded on this level of enrollment that the state determines. In 2021, you were funded with 17,882 students or FTEs under this super blend formula. But from an actual FTE count, that's the 17,267. So we wanted to provide that information because the super blend was a one-year only. And so on a go-forward basis, you'll be funded on what your actual FTE count is. We wanted to make sure that you had that information. The last graph that I have to present on the revenue side is with regards to the non-recurring COVID-19 relief funding. So what we have here on the graph is the known awarded grants as of June 30th, 2021, that's specific to emergency funding. As I mentioned at the onset, this is largely what's referred to as CRF and Education Stabilization Fund, or ESER. So what we have here is we show you within those grant components, what was the district awarded, and as of June 30th, how much of that had been expended. And so you'll see for the four individual grants that are presented here, the majority of it was expended by June 30th, 2021, just a small amount remaining on ESER 2. And again, I just want to reiterate that the part of the reason we call these grants out specifically is just so that you have some detailed understanding of what numbers associate with each of those. But again, this is all one-time funding and not recurring. So we just kind of keep that as perspective of the overall revenue picture. And now I will turn it over to Anthony, and he'll cover some of our expenditures.
All right, moving on. So this next slide analyzes the general fund expenditures broken down by type of expenditure. The total general fund expenditures for the district for the year were approximately $272.6 million. Of that total, the combined salaries and benefits and retirement pass-through funding represent approximately $224 million, meaning approximately 82% of the general fund expenditures is expended on salaries and benefits for the district. As a reminder, the $18.5 million of MIPSers pass-through monies are amounts received in revenue by the state then immediately sent to the mandated retirement system once received. So money in on one side and right out the door on the other. Approximately 3% relates to supplies and materials, such as many of the utility costs of the district. 3% relates to other generic costs of the district. And then approximately 12% relates to purchase services, which includes a variety of things for the district, including technology, transportation, maintenance and custodial costs, and a variety of other people costs. Specifically within purchase services, approximately $15.2 million, or 45%, is related to this overall people cost bucket, we'll say, including substitute teachers and drivers and other related costs. And so when you add this together with the total salaries and benefits, the total percentage of general fund expenditures for what we'll call people cost are approximately 88% of the total $272.6 million. On this slide, we are going in, we're going to break down the salaries and benefits expenditure of the bucket on the previous page of the $224 million. And so of that $224 million, approximately $132 million are related to salaries and wages, purely salaries and wages as expected. This is the majority of the expenditures in the area for the district. Additionally, total contributions to the MIPSers retirement system Additionally, total contributions to the MIPSers retirement system represent about $55.9 million, or 25% of the total amount of salaries and benefits expenditures here. And then healthcare-related costs represent about $24.8 million of expenditures. And we'll talk about both of these items more in the coming slides. On the next slide, we have a further breakdown of the general fund salaries and benefits, and this is more by function area, but it's just another way of slicing up that pie. So of the $224.2 million in salaries and benefits, the most significant area in which these costs are incurred are within instruction and support of approximately $197.3 million. In advance, as we're as we're talking through these these various functions, we use the labels that are prescribed by the state of Michigan and which align with the reporting in our financial audit report. So you see on the bottom left-hand corner there, so instruction, structural support, school administration, et cetera. Approximately 7% relates to school building administration. 1% of these funds are related to general administration. 1% relates to operations and maintenance, and then approximately 3% relates to all other departments, not included in the other breakouts, such as human resources, human resource services, athletics, and business services. As you can see, the blue component and the reddish-orange component represent approximately 95% of the total expenditures related to salaries and benefits. These two components are items affecting the student experience in the building. So the majority of the dollars spent on salaries and benefits are being expended on direct student activities. Moving on to the next slide, this graph here highlights the eight-year trend of the MIPSers retirement expense for the district. As a reminder, all districts that have, all districts have collective bargaining agreements are mandated to participate in the statewide retirement system. The district has no input on contribution rates, investments for the system, et cetera, but they are told what their annual contribution rate will be. As you can see, this cost has been steadily increasing over the past seven years, leveling off slightly in 2020 and increasing once again in 2021. And it's important to note that the district and its employees have to contribute into this plan. However, this slideshow focuses solely on the costs borne by the district out of the general fund expenditures. The total cost for 2021 of $55.9 million include the additional, again, $18.5 million that you would have regardless of that additional 147(c) money that the state grants you currently. So just begin highlighting these these multiple components. And the reason we show this timeline is because prior to 2013, 2014, districts were not receiving the 147(c) funding or the additional funding for retirement plan contribution. This next slide shows a historical trend of healthcare cost for the school district. So it highlights the eight-year, prior eight-year cost of healthcare cost for the school district. It's important to note here as well that while employees and the district contribute to healthcare expenditures, this slide just shows the the cost borne by the by the district. In recent years, costs have been contained through through board efforts, and we've seen this in the past with with the district. However, the overall cost of healthcare is continuing to increase, which is a common trend we're seeing across many of the districts that we audit. Healthcare costs can certainly fluctuate from year to year based on employee participation, selection of plans, and a variety of other reasons. But I think the overall takeaway here is that the overall trend is showing that healthcare costs are on the rise and continuing to rise. This next slide here is when we bring it all back together. We, this is the identical slide we looked at several slides ago with Jennifer, which is just showing, again, the comparative general fund, fund balance for the last several years. And again, now that we've just talked about expenditures, I think it's important again to once, once again, to highlight the fund balance as a percentage of your expenditures is maybe even the more telling and important piece to focus on here. On this next slide that I'll I'll cover, the last slide I'll cover here, is a comparison of the Ann Arbor Schools' fund balances a percentage of expenditures compared to a variety of different demographic-type districts. So we compare Ann Arbor to other districts within the county, other WISD-type districts in blue there. You can see Ann Arbor compared to other high-performing districts in the state of Michigan. And then you can also see what we would consider maybe demographically comparable districts to Ann Arbor in the purple slides here. In particularly this year, we wanted to call out districts that are are similar in size based on a number of metrics, but Rochester, Troy, and Plymouth Canton would be, when you're just taking a step back and comparing yourselves to others, that may just be similar in size. Those are ones on this on this chart that you would want to look to. All right, I'll kick it back over to Jennifer to wrap up our last final thoughts here.
So now we'll we'll kind of take a step back out of the details and and just give you kind of a final few takeaway thoughts. So really, as a result of our audit, we identify that the district continues to operate fiscally responsibly, which is evidenced by the clean opinion, the unmodified opinion that we've issued. Again, the highest form of assurance that we can provide to you, along with what we've observed for the continual monitoring of monthly financial activity. We also note that cost containment and improved efficiencies will need to be a continued focus point of the organization in order to continue to yield positive financial results and and continue that focus on long-term, fiscally responsible results. The board and the administration have continued your commitment to oversee the district for long-term viability. As you continue to be future-focused, we did want to just highlight a number of different areas from, you know, a financial perspective that you'll, it'll be important that you continue to monitor. If I move to the next slide. This would include, as we mentioned, the close monitoring of your fund balance levels, keeping an eye on what's occurring in the state economy. You know, as revenue estimations continue to come in, you know, this will directly impact the state's ability to to continue to fund you on that per pupil basis. So just keeping close eye on that, along with some other other areas to continue to focus on. And again, we'll mention that just from an overall contribution to what's occurring within the district, the the fact that you have the sinking fund millage, the successful bond program being implemented, along with the countywide, the special education millage, that really does make a big difference in terms of everything that you're managing outside of those general fund operations. And so thinking about that holistically in terms of everything that goes into running the district. And so here we just, again, in the vein of continuing to look forward, just areas to to continue to monitor and keep your eye on as you continue to plan for the future of of most significance from our vantage point is just the plan for ongoing funding challenges, managing this one-time grant funding, and just what whatever else is is to be held in store with regards to other funding mechanisms and and potentially getting that to an appropriate and equitable level at the state of Michigan. That really wraps up our commentary. We'll turn it back over to Dr. Swift.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your help. And thank you for helping us to ensure our community and ourselves that we are fiscally sound and strong. Trustees, there was a great part of this budget this year that was moving and changing with COVID dollars. There was a reference earlier in the audit presentation to $10.5 million. And I've asked Ms. Osinski to pop up a document that is attached in Board Docs, so it's there for anyone in the public to take a look. But folks may say, what happened to that $10.5 million? I wonder, trustees, where that went. And of course, when those final expenditure reports are are completed, they will be shared publicly. Those will be posted on our website, just like all of our financial documents are. But because these funds bridge over a number of years, we wanted to pause this evening just for a minute, and we put just some spotlight. Trustees, you know them well because you've been in these seats considering them for the past 20 months. But in the buckets of health and safety measures, really, over in education support, and then bucket number three, facility support to ensure COVID-safe environments, over all of those buckets is really the overarching theme of the cost of staff and the cost of additional hours for staff. So whether you're looking at the idea of cleaning our schools, which we had to do a whole lot more of, that means additional people. It means additional hours. It also means additional stuff that you purchased. Trustees, you remember the robots and the backpacks with with the disinfectant. Our health and safety measures, our hiring and training, and work hours, and overtime work hours of additional staff to fulfill all the functions of contact tracing and testing and all the other required health and safety tasks to support our schools. Those costs began back in 2020, and they continue to this day and into the future. In educational support, you're very familiar with these, but they are about implementation of our COVID response plan, our COVID instructional plan, and also in preparing for return-to-in-person learning. We had a quarter of the year last year doing both an in-person hybrid option and a virtual option. So we were literally scaling up two systems for a quarter of the year last year. That was at significant cost, but we did that in order to meet the needs of our students and our families in the community. Summer learning programs over summer 20, summer 21. I saw the team this week, and they were already setting the date to meet for summer 22. So we'll have, you know, three to five years of intensive summer endeavor, and we're offering that free or essentially free those programs across the district. Do you remember last year, free enrichment programming on Wednesdays and Saturdays? No cost for our rec and ed programming during the year last year. Increased pay in in building-specific substitutes. And right now, we're running a a group of substitutes paid every day in every building in order to be sure that we can have our schools open as much as possible. Trustees, you remember the connectivity costs, the jet packs, the Zoom licenses, the hotspots, the Comcast Essentials, payments to support about 500 families who needed help connecting to that virtual learning environment. We could go on, but just a reminder, even with the facilities of custodial costs of clean air, there was ventilation concerns. And so we did that refurbishment of the HVAC systems, upgraded our filters, replacing our filters three times a year. So that's an additional cost. The purchase of portable air cleaners. Trustees, you remember, we did the study to know where those should go. And we've had our entire system on enhanced indoor air quality mode, turning over that air many more times per hour. That runs up the utility bill. The touchless faucets and installation, you probably, that was way back at the beginning, trustees. I'm not sure if you remember, but we replaced all of our faucets in the schools, the capping of the water bubblers, the water testing measures. You remember Legionel and other concerns when we returned to schools, and we did significant extra flushing and testing. So again, when the time comes, we turn in our documentation to the state. Ms. Minnick and I will bring that to our finance committee, and we'll publish those documents to the website. But because we're kind of in between here, we wanted to just spotlight some of the mini-expenses. What I'm proud of in this district, it's that we've used one-time money for COVID-related costs. And that's what it was designed for. That's what we used it for, to ensure that our students could continue learning and that they would be as healthy and safe as we could possibly make them. Despite the turbulence around us, this budget shows consistency. It shows strength. It shows a methodical and responsible and wise use of the funds that we've been entrusted with to serve and oversee, serve our children and families and oversee the Ann Arbor Public Schools for short term through the end of this pandemic, medium term, and then looking beyond COVID so that we're strong on the other side of this, these circumstances that we've been through. So trustees, I thank you so much because I know so many times last year we brought you difficult decisions. We brought you choices with no good options, and you persevered through that. I know not everybody agrees with every decision, but we are bringing tonight a solid look at our finances and our fiscal responsibility, and we are strong and solid in the district.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.